Everybody, please stand in the box. For the allegiance of the House of State's Honor to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberate, and just as well.
Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. Board of Commissioners, public meeting, Tuesday, September 3rd, 2019. The time is 7:30. Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231, Public law, 1975, notice of this meeting was published in the November 29th, 2018, issues of the Nutley Sun, the Herald News, and the Star Ledger. A copy of this notice has been posted on the Nutley Town Hall Walton Board and a copy is on file in the municipal clerk's office. Commissioner Rogers?
Here.
Commissioner Tucci?
Here.
Commissioner Evans?
Here.
Commissioner Petracco is absent, excused. Mayor Scarpelli?
Here.
All present mayor, except for Commissioner Petracco, he is absent, excused this evening.
Everybody, can we have just a moment of silence? We lost, Public Safety lost two important people, the mother of Chief Cuffone and the brother of Chief Stromwell. So if we can have a moment for Mrs. Cuffone and Vincent Stromwell. Minutes, Madam Clerk.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We have regular commission meetings for August 6th, 2019. Need a motion, please?
Move it.
I need a second. Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
We also have executive session minutes for August 6th, 2019, and August 20th, 2019.
Move it. Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Yes, on August 6th, I abstained on most of my matters.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
And that's it for minutes, Mayor.
Move to reports. Commissioner Tucci?
Yes, Mayor, I have a shade report for the month of August 2020.
Thank you, Commissioner. Bills, Madam Clerk.
Yes, Mayor. Bill list for September 3rd, 2019. Public Affairs, ninety-three thousand, nine hundred ninety-nine thousand and zero cents. Revenue and Finance, two million, six hundred and twenty-four thousand, four hundred and twenty-nine dollars and forty-one cents. Public Safety, forty-two thousand, twenty-one dollars and twenty-eight cents. Public Works, eighty-three thousand, two hundred ninety-seven dollars and eight cents. Parks and Public Property, six hundred and fifty-five thousand, four hundred and forty-four dollars and eighty-five cents. Water Utility, ninety-one thousand, eight hundred and fifty-nine dollars and seventy-one cents. Overtime payroll total, thirty-six thousand, one hundred and forty-nine dollars and sixty-four cents. Total payroll, eight hundred and twenty-two thousand, eight hundred and seventy-four dollars and zero cents, for a grand total of four million, four hundred thirteen thousand, nine hundred and twenty-five dollars and thirty-three cents.
Move the bills?
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
And that's it for the bill list.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Public comment on agenda items only, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mayor. All persons addressing the Board of Commissioners regarding community concerns should approach the microphone and provide their name and address for the record. Unless further time is granted by the Board, each person shall limit their address to three minutes. All remarks to the Board and its individual members must be addressed to the Mayor. The Mayor may defer citizens' comments to the appropriate member of the Board. Dialogue between citizens and others addressing the Board shall be allowed unless the Mayor or presiding officer or the majority of the membership of the Board shall determine that the interests of the quorum and/or the expeditious conduct of municipal business are being adversely affected by such dialogue.
Anybody wish to address the Board of Commissioners on agenda items only? Seeing none, let's move on to Board of Commissioner announcements. Commissioners?
Yes, Mayor, I have one announcement. On Friday, September 13th, we are having a concert in the Mud Hole with the one that cooperates with us. We postpone, I do think, just about all of our concerts this year, so we're billing this one as our summer slash back-to-school concert featuring the Advernals at 7:00 p.m. in the Mud Hole. Everyone, please stay up there and we have a nice supply. Thank you, Commissioner.
All right, let's move on to resolutions. Commissioner Rogers?
Resolution number 20619, declaring September as National Prostate Cancer Awareness Month as written. I move it.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Resolution number 20719, recognizing September as National Preparedness Month as written. I move it.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
And resolution number 21319, and I'll read it. Whereas the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley adopted resolution number 173-19 on July 2019, authorizing the municipal clerk to advertise for the receipt of seal bids for the collection, removal, and disposal of solid waste, bulk waste, vegetative waste, leaves, and grass clippings, and whereas said resolution must be amended in order to correct the bid opening time as per the bid advertisement and specifications, now therefore be it resolved that resolution number 173-19 is hereby amended. To state that, the aforementioned bid shall be publicly opened and read on September 11th, 2019, in the commission chambers, Township Hall, 1 Kennedy Drive, at 3:00 p.m. prevailing time, so moved.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
That's it, Mayor, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Tucci?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Whereas the Township of Nutley has a need to acquire specialized professional services as a fair and open contract pursuant to the provision of NJSA 19:44A-20.5, and whereas the Department of Parks and Public Property has a need to acquire specialized professional services for a New Jersey licensed certified tree expert for forestry services throughout the Township of Nutley, and whereas the municipal clerk is hereby authorized, she is directed to advertise for a request for qualifications for township forester, now therefore be it resolved that the RFQs shall be due on Wednesday, September 25th, 2019, at 11:00 a.m., addressed the municipal clerk, Nutley Township Hall, 1 Kennedy Drive, Nutley, New Jersey. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Joy to have, Mayor. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Evans?
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas all local government units must prepare and submit a corrective action plan as part of the annual audit process in accordance with OMB, A circular 133, and 98-01, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, that the attached corrective action plan for the audit year 2018 is hereby approved. Be further resolved that a copy of this corrective action plan is to be kept on file with the Township Clerk's office, and one certified copy is to be submitted to the Director of the Division of Local Governmental Services, so moved.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, that the treasurer be, and she is hereby authorized to refund overpayments of property tax, excuse me, of tax charges in the amount of eight thousand, four hundred and sixty-six dollars and ninety-six cents, which is the total amount covering blocks 7701-7, 4700-29, 5302-12, so moved.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci? I'm sorry, Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
I want you to leave my friend out.
Whereas the law firm of Archer and Greiner, Attorneys at Law, 10 Highway 35 in Red Bank, has been awarded a non-fair and open contract as a professional service pursuant to provisions of NJSA 1944A-20.4, 20.5, as appropriate to provide services to the code enforcement department, whereas that service will exceed the contract amount of sixteen thousand dollars, and the following change order is needed. Change order one, provide legal services not to exceed twenty, excuse me, seventy-five hundred dollars. Whereas funds are available in account 901-226-205, and have been certified by the Chief Financial Officer, said certification being attached to this resolution, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, that the change order in the amount of seventy-five hundred dollars be, is hereby approved.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'm going to read Commissioner Petracco's, and I'm going to combine, since they're all grants for medical leave for four employees, be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that Richard Manzatelli, as stated in resolution 20919, Ronald Marino, as stated in resolution 21019, Meredith Donatello, as stated in resolution 21119, and Linda Mafucci, as stated in resolution 21219, are employees of the Department of Public Safety and be granted a medical leave absence without pay effective September 4th, 2019 through October 4th, 2019. I move the resolutions. Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
This next resolution, Mrs. Ruth Bedford passed away in the last couple of weeks, and we thought it appropriate, on behalf of the Board of Commissioners, to do a resolution on her behalf, and we're all going to read a little bit of it. Whereas Ruth G. Bedford, born on April 23rd, 1918, was a lifelong Nutley resident who resided on Highfield Lane, and whereas Ruth Bedford was a graduate of Nutley High School and Berkeley School of Secretarial Training, following graduation, she worked at WT Grant in New York City from 1957 to 1992 as secretary to Mr. Grant, the founder of the company. Whereas Ruth Bedford was surrounded by a family submerged in Nutley social and political life, Ruth's grandfather, Abram Blum, was the first mayor of Nutley under the commission formal government in 1912. Her uncle, Simon Blum, was also a commissioner, and her sister, Jane Bergio, was the New Jersey Secretary of State in the Kane administration.
Whereas Ruth G. Bedford was married to Stanley Bedford, a lawyer and Superior Court of New Jersey judge. Ruth and Stanley met in 1952 while both were working with the Essex County Young Republicans Club and in General Dwight Eisenhower's presidential campaign. And whereas Ruth and Stanley were prominent members of the Nutley community, hosting many philanthropic events at their home, including the annual Lollipop Party and the Nutley Family Service Bureau September Social, which raised funds to benefit residents in the community. Whereas Ruth G. Bedford served on many boards, the Nutley Family Service Bureau, where she served as president, and in 2013 was named lifetime trustee, the Nutley Parkside Apartments, Planned Parenthood of Metropolitan New Jersey, and Offender Aid and Restoration of Essex County. She contributed annually to the Nutley Thriving Survivors, Paper Mill Playhouse, and other national charities.
And whereas Ruth G. Bedford is the founder of the Paper Mill Playhouse Rising Star Scholarship, which recognizes exceptional accomplishments of students studying theater in college, and whereas Ruth G. Bedford has been recognized for her many contributions to Nutley and its citizens, including the Matia Distinguished Community Service Award with her husband Stanley, the Nutley JC's Annual Distinguished Service Award for Civic Affairs, the Montclair-Glemridge Nutley Chapter of the American Red Cross Annual Comradeship Award, and the Nutley Education Foundation Award, and the Nutley Bellevue Columbus Day Parade Committee Community Excellence Award.
And whereas Ruth G. Bedford passed away on Monday, August 19th, 2019, at the age of 101, Ruth will always be remembered for her unwavering dedication in support of local and statewide community organizations. And now therefore be it resolved by the Mayor and the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the Township remember Ruth G. Bedford. Be it further resolved that the community extends its sincerest condolences to the family and friends of Ruth G. Bedford for her distinguished contributions and service to the Township of Nutley, so moved. Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners. Whereas the Township of Nutley desires to enter into a lease agreement for One Canon Image Runner Advanced C-5550i colored digital copier system in the Department of Public Works, and Two Canon Image Runner Advanced C-550 colividial copier systems, and One Canon Image Runner Advanced colored digital copier system for the Department of Revenue and Finance from an authorized vendor under the State and New Jersey Cooperative Purchasing Program, whereas Leslie Digital Imaging LLC, 50 Jericho Quadrangle Suite 115, Jericho, New York, has been awarded the New Jersey State Contract Number 8404462/G2705 for reprographic equipment. And whereas said lease includes a total monthly lease in the amount of $276 for the Department of Public Works, and $876.68 for the Department of Revenue and Finance for a period of 60 months, which includes all parts, supplies, and maintenance. Whereas funds are available from accounts 905-702-206, 901-210-206, 901-218-206, and 901-222-06, and have been certified by the Chief Financial Officer subject to the adoption of the 2019 municipal budget, said certification be attached to this resolution, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, the Township of Nutley authorizes an execution of lease agreement with Leslie Digital Imaging for the above colored digital copier systems according to state contract. I move the resolution. Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Where is raffle application received from the following organizations? Rotary Club of Nutley, license number 40-19, off-premise 50/50 cash raffle, still be held Thursday, November 21st, 2019. Rotary Club of Nutley, license number 4119, off-premise merchandise raffle to be held Saturday, November 30th, 2019. Whereas the applications have been reviewed and approved by the municipal clerk and the Police Department, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the aforementioned licenses are approved, and the municipal clerk is authorized to issue the raffle licenses, so moved the resolution. Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
That concludes the business portion of our meeting. Anybody wish to address the Board of Commissioners this evening?
Chris Clary, 115 George Avenue. I have a question, or more follow-up, in regards to the transitional aid that we're, I was just kind of wondering if there was an update on that? If not, if there's an estimate yet of what the impact to the taxpayer would be, and when that would be felt?
Sure. So I was on the phone this evening with the Governor's Office, and we should get some indication within the next two weeks as to what they're going to do. The root issues that the states address, trying to address regarding the budget, they remain as yet unresolved. So I'm not aware of that in the last week or so that they've come to any further conclusions, and based on the update that I got earlier this evening, it doesn't look like they're going to make much progress soon. What they are looking at is areas where they can free up money to start to provide that to the calendar year towns that have applied for transitional aid, which includes Nutley. They're very well aware of the calendar issues that we have, and we're still operating under a temporary budget authorization. We need to understand what that revenue position is going to be in order to finalize our budget and therefore get to a final tax bill for the year. If we were to not receive any of the 4.1 million dollars of the aid that we asked for, we have two choices. We have to find a way to cut our budget, or it would result in adjustment to the November tax bill. But each, both the county and the schools, as well as my commissioners, we've been talking about this over the last few weeks, and we're all unnoticed preparing for in the event that we have to absorb an aid loss, or deal with a temporary deferral of that, that we would be prepared to take action so that we would not be in a position to have to pass 100% of that on to the taxpayers. I'm not sure we will be able to absorb all of it, but we are looking at what we could absorb.
Anybody else wish to address the Board of Commissioners this evening?
Maria Bosse, 209 Highfield Lane. I've owned a three-family house, I own a three-family house in Nutley, and in my family since 1939. It has an attic apartment, three rooms, and they're not really attic, regular apartment. However, I can't rent them, and I understand that, it's the code and all the rest. It was rented continuously from 1939 until about 10 years ago. However, very often during the conversations that they had here about the previous building inspector and the builder and whatever, Mr. Evans, I've heard him say many times that nobody in the town is above the law. And I hope that that is true. But I found, and I've spoken to many people who know that this is a fact, that a home at 272 Nutley Avenue, the homeowner has a deck that goes all the way to the end of the property, and on both sides of the property, between two houses and the rear of the home as well. The home has a concrete deck that is on all three property lines, and has been there since the home was built about 10 or more years ago. Everyone in town, and I think including the five of you, or the four of you, know that this is a fact, and it has been allowed to remain for reasons I can only surmise. My question, I guess to Mr. Evans, since that's your department, is why should I have to abide by town codes and laws or whatever?
So, embedded in your statement is quite a few questions that require facts. One is the property that you mentioned. Are you aware of the fact that that property was before the Board of Adjustment, it was granted variances for what is the use on that property? Are you aware of that?
No, I'm not.
Then it would be valuable to know what those variances were, and how they were granted by the Board of Adjustment during the time that that property was being built, and there might be others.
I don't hear you, I'm sorry.
There might be other, there might be other variances, but many times when you see something where it is beyond what you would see the standard code, right, first question usually goes to whether any variances granted by the Board of Adjustment of the Township, which would not be this board, or me, or my department, it would go through a separate board, which would have to go through that review. I do, I recognize the street number, and I believe that property did have variances. I don't know to full extent of what they were at the time that that was built. I think that the one you're referring to is the area where it was the, there was a boarding house that used to be there?
Right.
Yeah, a number of years ago. So I think I recognize what you're referring to. So I would, I don't know offhand what those variances are, but that would be, to me, is a normal question. When we do find that someone has done something to their property, that requires, that violates our code, when we do that inspection, they do receive a violation notice, and they are required to bring it into conformance with our code. Or if it relates to something that was beyond the code, they can go before the Board of Adjustment and be granted relief to leave it as built. So if you have others, there might be a situation where they violate the code, but they went before the Board of Adjustment and were granted relief.
So that I can do the same, go before the Board of Adjustment and ask for variance to rent the third-floor apartment?
You certainly can.
And would I be granted, do you think?
I have no idea. But I would say that there are code issues regarding fire safety and other things that would have to be met to make it acceptable to occupy an attic for residential purposes.
Many of these homes were built long before you and I were here, and, you know, it doesn't seem fair, or if that's a good word, that, you know, they should, we should be, in fact, the building inspector came out to this, my home, and said that, to quote him, "Some of the crap they rent in Nutley, this is a really nice apartment." And, you know, if I went before the Board of Adjustments, I guess I won't get the same preference, though, right? Or would I?
You would get the same, you submit, there's several things. You would need to show your property, explain what it is, you'd have to provide a survey, would be represented by counsel, and submit an application to go before the Board. There would be a need to have experts provide testimony with regard to consistency with our master plan, as well as how does it contribute to the neighborhood in a positive or negative way? Safety issues would have to be addressed because the Board would, because it's a hearing, it's not just, I want to do this.
So would it's my advantage to have a counsel, to have an attorney?
Oh, sure. Oh, yeah, it would go, it's a hearing.
And these homes were here like 100 years ago?
Yeah, but the zoning laws in Nutley, you know, while they haven't been in existence forever, the code did come into existence in 1952, right, and it does have requirements associated with that. Construction codes, safety codes have all evolved since your property was built, which has a lot of requirements that are attached to it. So there has been an evolution of that. So if it was an existing three-family that was being rented and used, and there was a record of that, then, you know, there might be a variance that it will leave you to say, "Leave it as built, leave it as, leave it as it was." If it hasn't been rented or continuously used for that purpose, it would then be, would not be considered a non-conforming use under the code, and you would have to go for a variance. So since you're not renting it today, you would need to go for a variance and get permission to create that use.
Well, I'm only not renting it because I was told I can't.
So the fact that it's not in use, it doesn't create an exception. The fact that it's not in use, you would need to go before, make an application, you can go to the code office, and it will help you file the application requirements, and you would need to go before the Board of Adjustment, and have a hearing before the representatives of that Board, who will make a determination of whether or not you would be able to convert your two-family to a three-family.
And so on this property, I can call the town building and find out if there was a variance issue or what would be taken?
Sure, the code office would have a, you could also request, file an open request as well, either way.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Anybody else wish to address the Board of Commissioners this evening?
Joan Rubino, 48 North Road. This is just a footnote on the plastic bag issue. I know that you are not going to be able to resolve it, and I think the state is going to step in, but I just wanted to relay an incident. I was at the ShopRite yesterday, and the cashier was also bagging my food, and we started a conversation. He said, "Well, these bags aren't too bad." He said, "It's those recyclable, those reusable ones." He said, "One day I opened the bag, and it was filled with ants." That's just another thing about the sanitary conditions that some people live in, and they are bringing it into the store. But I just thought that was an interesting aside. I would like to know if the handbooks are ready, for the employee handbooks?
They are almost ready. Unfortunately, there were several different changes in the law within the last two months, if you follow the news, and I know that you do, regarding leave, new leave policies, sick leave, Family Medical Leave Act for New Jersey, and I have to reconfigure that to embed the new law into it. So it was ready, and now it's, I had to make some more changes.
Okay, and you will notify us when it is?
I notify the commissioners, and then it's up to them to win it. These are for internal employees, they're not for the public, it's not a public document, you know, but...
In other words, the taxpayer has no right to see it?
I didn't say that. I'm just saying, from my perspective, my job is to produce it for the commissioners, who distribute it to the employees. It's not necessarily a public document, like a normal public document.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else wish to address the Board of Commissioners this evening?
My name is Alex Chiquino, I have a business, as most of you know. My name is Ella Chiquino, I have a business, as most of you know, on Franklin Avenue, Mama Victoria. Two things I'd just like to, some consideration about, recently, well, not recently, it does happen occasionally. When we close Franklin Avenue, and it closes in front of my business, it really presents a problem for me. Most of the events that I do are on the weekends, so that most of my business is probably 85% is on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. So I understand that obviously fourth grades and events like that, you need to close the street and I'm 100% and I know in advance what those dates are and I make sure that I don't book events. Most of my events get booked, in some cases even a year in advance. Just a recent incident, this past Sunday, it was closed for the street fair. I had a wedding booked for that day that was booked many months ago for four o'clock. When I received the notice just a week and a half ago on my door that there was a street festival, that the street would be closed, I had to make a phone call to the wedding and say, "The street's going to be closed, we're going to have a problem with, you can't get in from Franklin, the back is blocked, you'll have to move your event." Long story short, they canceled the wedding, obviously, because they couldn't get in. So my, and I, all four festivals and street fairs, I think it's a wonderful community thing, so I 100% am not suggesting that we shouldn't do those. However, maybe some consideration should be given to the business owners that are open on Franklin Avenue on the weekend. Now, most businesses are closed and it does not affect them, but I am the one business that the weekend is when I do business. So if, I don't know if we can move them to maybe the other end of Franklin, if businesses on that end don't mind and welcome that type of, you know, a situation on the weekend. But for me, south of center is really a hardship. And again, when the bulk of your business is on the weekend, if I have to close my restaurant on a Sunday because of a street fair, that I can't pay the rent. That's the bottom line, it really is disruptive. So if any consideration could be made where, you know, for those, not, obviously not the parades, but for the street fairs, that if we can move them north of center or maybe in parks or somewhere where, now I understand I'm the only one, that probably, you know, again, it affects and it's just one business, but for me, that is a real hardship. Second, that I have voiced a few times to, in each one of you probably just maybe a complaint in passing, we really do have a serious parking problem south of center. And through the years, I mean, there are some businesses, including mine, that are very busy, vibrant businesses, and we really don't have, you know, on this other end, there are many municipal parking, you know, lots that businesses use. There is really nothing south of center. And it really, during the week, for instance, we do quite a few during the week events, like lunchtime. I book one of my rooms with an event, I have to turn away the second event because there's no parking. So, you know, again, these are things that are disruptive, disruptive to my business. We do have a parking lot, but it is not enough to accommodate. So I don't know what the answer is. I know it's not an easy answer, finding additional parking there. There is the one lot number five, but most of those, 90% of those spots are designated to someone. That can't be used. So I don't know what the answer is, but maybe some brainstorming and if we can look into any possibilities that could be addressed in the future. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Nella.
Before you go, on a side note, I have heard excellent reviews about your restaurant, I really have, so I commend you. And when you hear, when I'm out of town and somebody mentions your restaurant, that gives me the opportunity to say thank you, good job.
Thank you, thank you, and we try. Thank you.
Thank you, Nella.
Mayor, if I might, Nella, I totally sympathize with what you're saying and perhaps there's a notification process we might be able to put in place so that our businesses don't suffer and you don't have to turn folks away for street fairs and other events and they are great community builders and I know you buy into all of that and you're a great contributor in this town. But we should probably look into a notification process so all of our businesses are aware of what's going on and not the day of, so that, you know, they're scrambling to make other arrangements. And as far as the parking is concerned, I know we've been talking about this for some time and actually I'm looking at something similar to the white paper I did on the multifamily housing situation concerning parking on Franklin Avenue. I mean, on the, on the north end, we have greater opportunities and more parking, but I totally sympathize with you, being a business owner myself, with limited parking, all right? And a self-storage building going up behind me, which is, I'm sure is going to take up more parking spaces. I think we as a board are committed, all right, to finding solutions, all right, to the parking issue, especially by your business and affecting the other business, which will attract others, all right, and sustain the ones that are there. So it's not something that we've forgotten about. Actually, I'm looking at it as we speak and once we come to some decision, and it's a tough one because there's not a lot of space there, you know, to put additional parking lots or a deck or something else, but your requests are not falling on deaf ears, all right? It's just something that's taking a little bit longer. And yes, your restaurant is outstanding and you do a wonderful job. And thank you for being here.
Appreciate it, thanks.
Thank you, Nella. Anybody else wish to address the Board of Commissioners this evening? Seeing none?
Make a motion to close.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.